Host Mia.
Good evening, the time is now five oh three P M and I would like to call to order the June twentieth twenty twenty four Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting that was rescheduled from the June twelfth twenty twenty four meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome everyone, my name is Sheila Adam Stafford, I'm the Chair of this committee and District Four Representative on the Prince George's County Board of Education. We will now have introduction of committee members, starting with board members, administration staff, board office staff and all other guests.
Uh, good evening, I'm Judy Mickens Murray, Chair of the Board and also a voting member on this committee. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Kenneth Harris, District Seven Representative for the Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Rain Rivera Forbes and I'm the forty-third student member of the Board. I'm also a voting member of this committee.
Good evening, Dr. Zippora Miller, I'm the Board Member for District Five.
My name is Lisa Howell, I am the Chief Financial Officer of Prince George's County Public Schools.
Good evening, Sharoska Coleman, Chief Operating Officer.
Good evening, Jason Washington, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services.
Good evening, I'm Janice Walters Assemble, I'm the Internal Audit Supervisor.
Good evening, I'm Saif Stefanelli, Director of Building Services.
Good evening, I'm Siobhan Smith, uh, Director of Budget and Management Services.
Good evening, I'm Kibo Bart, Director of Transportation and Central Garage.
Sean Matlock, Director of O A I P D.
Good evening, I'm Revel D Fitzpatrick, he him he is, I'm the Director for the Prince George's County Board of Education. I want to thank everyone for watching at home.
Good evening, my name is Mia Barton, I'm Administrator Secretary in the Board Office.
Thank you, um, Ms. Barton, will you please call the, um, I'm sorry. Tonight, this committee will hear Operation C I P and budget updates along with the third quarter report from the Internal Audit Director. Ms. Barton, will you please call the role?
Absolutely. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Present.
Dr. Kenneth Harris.
Present.
Mrs. Jocelyn Rowe. Ms. Rain Rivera Forbes.
Present.
Mrs. Judy Mickens Murray.
Present.
We have a quorum present. Colleagues, tonight there will be a slight change to the agenda. We will be moving discussion three point one fiscal affairs updates to before the public comment to accommodate Chief Lisa Howell's schedule. May I have a motion to accept the June twentieth twenty twenty four meeting agenda as amended?
I move to accept the move, the, the, uh, June twentieth meeting as amended, amended, as amended.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the June twentieth twenty twenty four meeting agenda, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, the motion passes, the agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the May fifteenth twenty twenty four meeting minutes?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the May fifteenth twenty twenty four, uh, meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes, the agenda is adopted. I will now recognize Chief Lisa Howell to give us fi- fiscal affairs updates. Thank you, Chief Howell.
Thank you, Board Member Adam Stafford. Um, good evening to the community, just wanted to give a brief overview of where we are in the budget process. Um, that was discussed in detail at the last board meeting. Um, so as we've go, I was nearing the end of the reconciliation timeframe, we are taking into consideration the impact of all the changes coming out of legislative session. Um, coming out of the final decision from the county and the approval of our approval of the county's budget and our budget is included in that. Um, as well as final revenue numbers from, uh, M S D E. Based off of those updates, um, we know that we have a gap of around forty-eight million dollars. Administration has proceeded with, um, a path to close that gap that we previously shared with public and with constituents. Um, first, there were some adjustments that we had to add to that gap, that we had to add to the budget coming out of legislative session that was not previously included in the requested budget. So those updates have been made. Um, but in an effort to close the budget, it, the adjustments primarily considered the reduction to the P three payment that will not be made directly by the county on our behalf, directly to the state P three fund. Now that was in our budget previously has been reduced. During, uh, through a couple of, of series of financial reviews that we've done over the last couple of months, we were able to identify savings that would allow us to pay some of our lease purchase agreements early that were intended to be an obligation in twenty-five that we will be able to pay in twenty-four. Uh, the lease purchase agreements are essentially a financing vehicle that's used to pay for the purchase of textbooks, vehicles, um, both buses and non-buses, as well as technology, computers, Chromebooks, um, for our students and stuff. So we were able to identify savings early to items in twenty twenty-four to alleviate the impact on the budget in twenty twenty-five. Um, we're delaying these, some of the building maintenance and repairs that were planned for twenty twenty-five. Um, and we're going to try to work within the, the budget that we have, um, in order to accomplish much of the work that was intended. And then finally, um, most of the other adjustments are the result of program enhancements where positions have either been cut or enhancements have been delayed to be phased in over a two-year period, so not necessarily doing all of the, um, enhancements in twenty twenty-five, but spreading out over twenty-five and twenty-six. We did do a scrubbing of what we have in our reserves as well. So any well-developed budget includes centrally managed reserves that helps to account for those unknown items that we don't know about as we get into the fiscal year. Of course, we didn't cut them out completely because that would not be fiscally responsible. Um, but we do have funds set aside, we had funds set aside in the reserve for unknown items. Difficult to really estimate what the potential impact could be. Um, but we skinny those down to a lower level that we felt comfortable with, leaving an amount that we feel would be sufficient to get us through the next fiscal year and that we would obviously continue to reevaluate as we are executing, um, the budget plan for twenty twenty-five. And during the course of a typical financial review, to the extent that there are savings that are identified, we will utilize those savings to deal with unexpected or unplanned, um, expenditures, um, and other obligations that may arise. Um, finally, the other item that we also took a look at was summer school kits that we need for early learners that we are planning to continue with for this summer twenty twenty-four, but for summer twenty twenty-five, those expenditures or those budget items have been removed. Um, with all those measures that have been taken, there's still a gap of around seven, eight million dollars. Um, and we're going to close that gap through a hiring freeze, beginning the beginning of the starting beginning of the fiscal year. Even with all of the positions that we currently have in the budget that are vacant, um, whether they're existing positions or program enhancements, they will still go through the hiring freeze process. Um, and that hiring freeze is really going to focus on non-instructional, on those positions that don't have a direct impact on students will be excluded from that freeze. Um, as well as those positions that are essential to the operations of the school system. All other positions will be held and we will be evaluating those requests on a case-by-case basis. So that's not to say that it's not going to be any hiring, but it will be controlled hiring based off of the priorities of the school system to ensure we are adequately staffing our schools and adequately addressing the critical positions that we need to support our operations going forward for twenty twenty-five. So that is where we are in the current process. Um, as I mentioned at the board meeting last week, this is really a very temporary stopgap measure to close the budget for twenty twenty-five. We are dealing with permanent loss and revenue with the, um, removal or the reappropriation or realignment of the energy and telecom revenue that is now going towards the county's commitment to meet the blueprint requirement, but it's not in addition to as it had been previously. Furthermore, as a reminder, in our twenty twenty-five budget, we have a substantial use of fund balance of a hundred and twenty million dollars. Um, that was only intended to be a short-term measure to help stabilize the impact of the negotiated agreements that we entered into a couple of years ago. And so we're going to be nearing the end of that phase very soon, so the use of fund balance will dramatically be decreasing on a going-forward basis. So we really need to think about how our budget is going to be reset on a going-forward basis with a liberal um, and making sure that our budget is aligned with ongoing, um, revenue from the county, state and federal level. So to that end, um, it's not an easy exercise to be able to reset a three billion dollar budget in just a matter of a few months. Um, so we are going to continue the process that we've already started, which is taking a very deep look and going through reprioritizing the spend that we do have. Um, as well as ensuring the spend is in alignment with the requirements that we must meet as it relates to blueprint, so it'll be kind of a two-pronged exercise. Um, and that will really serve as the foundation as we begin to rebuild the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, um, and set the foundation as we move forward for future fiscal years. So that is where we are in the current budget process.
Thank you very much. Um, at this time, if my colleagues have any questions, uh, now you can feel free to ask those questions. Can raise your hand. Okay, thank you, um, so we'll go with, um, Vice Chair Walker, um, Chair Judy Mickens Murray and then Dr. Zippora Miller, thank you. Thank you so much for recognizing me, I appreciate that I'm not on the committee, but thank you so much, I appreciate it. Um, the question that I have, uh, Ms. Howell is have you, I know at the last board meeting, the board gave a number of different suggestions on some places to look. Now, we're not looking at it with a fine-tooth comb, but I'm wondering if you've had the opportunity to kind of comb through any of those in order to help to reduce the deficit that we have.
Well, I know there were suggestions on some of the cuts that they, that board members were hopeful that they would not be, um, considered for reduction. Um, but in terms of specific recommendations, um, I don't recall that there were specific takeaways coming out of that conversation from last week, but maybe I'm
Okay, no, no worry.
To what you might be referring to.
Yeah, I'll shoot you an email, no problem, thank you so much. I'm done. So, right, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Chair Adam Stafford. Uh, my first question is, and, um, uh, CFO Howell, I don't know if this is the right time to ask this, but with the next issue that we have, there's a million dollar uh, increase, is that included in your, um, reconciliation, is that in that seven thousand dollars that we need to reconcile? Do you know?
Which million dollar increase are you referring to?
In the M O U when it comes to the commercial close deadline. And I know we're doing it in the reverse, but I need to know about the money because you're going to leave.
I'll recognize, Jason, I think you're referring to, um, the M O U that's tied to the
Yeah, I am, yes, please.
That, that, there is, there is no money tied to the M O U. The million dollars that you are speaking to is specifically for the exclusive negotiating agreement period that if we fail to close, that is when that money will be due. That is what, that is, it's extending that time to do the deal. It's separate and apart, it's not tied to the M O U, it's not tied to our budget. That is, uh, tied to specifically, uh, the, uh, the terms of the P three agreement and, uh, the ability to, um, uh, close the deal, um, in the allotted time, uh, that's there.
Okay, I'll process that and then I'll come back to you when we get to you in the next phase.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, Ms. Howell, one final question. With the, as you look at how to have economies of scale, have you taken into consideration any of the salary and the caps for, um, the, uh, let, um, the executive team? Was, did you process any of that as you were looking at economies of scales for the, um, budget to reconcile?
That was not something that we looked at.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair, uh, Adam Stafford, um, Chief, oh, sorry. Chief Howell, I, I, I'm coming back to something, a conversation that we started at the board, but I wanted to, um, pose it here with, um, ensuring that our students' psychological safety was, um, a priority. And that being said, I did have an opportunity to speak with, um, Chief Davis earlier today. And what I did notice was, um, that that position was listed as a supervisor and didn't have to be, it could have been an instructional specialist, which is at a lower fiscal note. Um, and looking for places in which we can consider, because we know that the cuts across the board are going to be tough. Um, so looking at, uh, putting, since an instructional specialist is still a unit two and still a supervisory authority. So I, I said to her that I would, uh, come back and recommend to look at doing that. But also looking across the board, as you look at positions that were added, you know, there's a lot of data to support the need for wellness, it's not just bu- bullying, it's wellness across the board. Um, however, there are some new offices that are opening and I don't know what the data points were in terms of, um, academic achievement or culture and climate, um, were presented in those offices, could those be phased in? Um, as you look at those positions, because they haven't been filled and there are program enhancements that are on the budget that I didn't see up for consideration. There may be some positions on there that are, you know, um, that are not necessarily in that category of, and I know that they're not at schools, some of them are at the supervisory level.
Well, the one new offer that is being added in twenty twenty-five that does not exist or that was not considered in our twenty-four budget, I'm at the same level in twenty-five is the, um, Integrity Compliance, um, Office Position. Um, when that legislation went into effect at the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we did have a baseline assumption of what we needed to support that office based off of the very vague guidance that was outlined in the legislation. But now that we have an I C O in place and making the assessment of what's needed, there is a higher fiscal note associated with building out that office. And the legis- legislation does say that we have to consider, um, the request of what's needed for that office to be included in our budget. Um, and so I know that that's something that was certainly considered in developing what was needed um, for that submission process. Um, but that is currently reflected in the budget based off of, uh, legislation. Um, there were some new positions in existing offices, um, that are not school-based that were considered in pro- and via program enhancements. Um, and those posi- many of those positions were actually cut, and so we did take a look at those roles. Um, most of the positions that remain in terms of program enhancements are either related to, um, ongoing academic programs of the age. Um, or expansion of existing programs that we have in place. Um, we did also take a look at some of our operational positions as well in terms of supporting some of the critical work that needs to continue and did look to see what we would be able to implement this year and possibly phase that in over a long, longer period of time. Um, within, uh, security, as you recall, there was a substantial enhancement as well that was certainly needed, a key priority for, um, the community, for the board members, for the superintendent. We were adding fifty-nine positions associated with that. Um, and out of those fifty-nine, we're going to phase six of those in, in fiscal year twenty-six. So moving forward with what we prioritized was needed for this year. Um, but delaying some of those until twenty twenty-six. Same thing for the athletic trainers as well, um, not looking to completely eliminate that, but phase that in over a two-year period, moving forward with what we know that we will be to successfully recruit and hire for this year and then delaying the rest of that implementation until fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And then some of the other positions, I mean, I can get a lot of different details, but some of them are are geared towards supporting some of our programs, so as an example, you might see like a secretary and just one or one to support the execution of, um, all the work that's being done by one hundred and thirty-one community schools. Right now, there is no administrative support for them. And that program has failed to a level that can't be sustained without that level of support, so there was really consideration around being able to, as that program continues to have that support in order to provide, um, the necessary, um, efforts from an administrative standpoint. I know that during the proposed cycle, that was one item that was recommended by, um, Board Member Walker and others to really kind of look at the positions that were being counted. Um, and that was definitely a priority in terms of our focus and where we started when it came to being able to close the budget gap. And so while we, I specifically identified certain positions that are either being cut or certain enhancements that are being delayed, the remaining of closing this budget, budget gap is going to be all around non-school-based, non-essential positions that we're not going to go for. Even though the vacancy may be in the budget, um, on the backside of that, that position will not necessarily be filled, um, during this hiring freeze process. By far and large, our biggest cost are people costs. Um, so while we can look at contractual services and we can say, you know, minimizing travel and and, you know, all the things that we are looking at as well. You have an eight million dollar gap or so that remains, biggest way to be able to control that is through your hiring. And so making sure that we are going to support the instructional needs required at the school, the mental health support needs that are required at the school. Um, and looking what we can do from a central office standpoint for those in, for those positions that don't have a direct impact on students and delay those until a later point in time through our controlled hiring process. Um, and we do have some critical essential central office positions as well, so I don't want to kind of draw the line in the sand saying everything central office is not essential, because we do have some critical functions that if they are not filled, whether it's some of our I T security positions, it would put us at a vulnerable state, and so there's certain critical positions from a central office standpoint that we have prioritized as needing to move forward. But the others that we view are important but not essential and will be part of the hiring freeze, the controlled hiring process.
And I appreciate all the hard work that goes into it, but it's hard for me to consider when there are a lot of, um, parents and children who are in situations where um, their psychological safety is, um, impeding them from performing and impacting others to not advocate for such a, a place in, in which if we continue doing what we're always doing, the results don't change. I know you mentioned new office, you said, I thi- I can't remember the name of the office that you said that was legisla- what was, um, was mandated by legislation, but we also had the Transformational Leadership Office, I don't know how many positions there, but there are program enhancements there, and I'm not trying to say what should be done, but just, uh, scrubbing through each one and then, um, looking at maybe not staffing this at a supervisor level, but as an instructional specialist and Chair Judy Mickens Murray says, and looking at some of the salaries that are the exact level to ensure that our, our children have the supports that they need. So, if you can consider some of those, it will be much appreciated.
Thank you, I'm, I'm going to go to Dr. Harris at this time and then I'll jump in for my first round and we'll go to, um, Vice Chair Walker and then Chair Mickens Murray.
Thanks, Chair Adam Stafford, and I apologize when I have my camera on tonight, everyone. Um, hey, Ms. Howell, quick, uh, question for you, if you can elaborate a bit for myself and the committee, just talking through, uh, I know some of the reductions came from, uh, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but for example, reducing security staff from a certain amount to, you know, from value A to value B. Um, can you talk to committee about what it's like or when, when we start to consider those dollars for redistribution if we don't end up hiring someone for those positions? Like, at what point in the new year do we say, well, we've only actually reached eighty percent higher within this category? This money could be better allocated here instead of here.
Yeah, so that's, that's a great question, um, we will continue to closely monitor our budget, um, even more so than we have, uh, certainly.
Ms. Howell, you keep breaking up your, your, your voice or something, there's bad connection or something.
I'm trying to get close to computer as possible, I don't know if that's better? My face is all on the screen, but that's okay. All right, so, um, as we do with every, uh, fiscal year, as the budget is being executed and as we're monitoring the spend associated with our budget, particularly with our positions, salary lapse is our biggest saving. That will certainly be an effort that we continue to look at and that we evaluate, um, not just on the instructional side, but certainly for, um, all of the other areas as well. Even the past year, as an example, in twenty twenty-four, we had salary lapse of central office positions and we reallocated those funds in a, in an effort to help with some or other priorities for twenty twenty-four. So we will certainly be looking at this on a quarter-by-quarter basis, um, at a minimum, um, to see how the hiring is progressing, to see where there's salary lapse that's being realized. Um, and then determining how we might want to pre- reprioritize those funds for other needs that may come up during the year that we don't know about currently, that's not currently reflected in our budget. Um, but then also just determine where there's going to be savings that will fall to, um, the bottom line and help with building up our reserves as we move into the next fiscal year. Um, but certainly this will definitely be a year different than others, um, when it comes to the realignment of that spend. And then as part of that process, certainly keeping the board informed of what that looks like. Um, and if there's going to be a need for a financial review, then those conversations will be held at that point in time.
Thank you, and there's no expected timeline for when that financial review typically takes place, is there?
We typically begin a fin- we have typically have our first financial review once the first half of the fiscal year is complete. When you think about the cyclical nature of our business, you know, the first few months of the fiscal year, which is where we have, um, most of our staff are working, um, are at the schoolhouse. The schools don't return until the August timeframe, and so it's that, really that first quarter, you're not going to see a whole lot that's going to be different from what you had expected in terms of what you planned for in your budget. We will have a better sense once we get through the first quarter of this year what our hiring looks like, because we know that once we get through a certain point in time when it comes to hiring for our instructional staff that, um, it's going to level off after a certain point in time and you have a better sense of what that fill rate is going to look like for the remainder of the year. So most of our hiring for the schoolhouse will happen between now and the first quarter of the fiscal year. Um, and then we also will know at that point in time as well about the number of students who actually show up in the classrooms, that's the other part of this whole budgeting exercise. We build our budgets based off of projected enrollment. But if there's any difference between projected enrollment and actual enrollment, then we have to do a reconciliation in the fall to ensure that we're maintaining the right level of staffing in each of the schools and each of the different classrooms, and so that's always our second sort of rebalancing exercise that we go through. We build the budgets in the spring and we rebalance in the fall once the students actually show up. And that also gives us a sense of where we have the opportunity to possibly reprioritize, um, and really know where to redirect our resources depending on the students that show up.
Understood. Thank you. That concludes my questions, Chair.
Thank you. So my questions are around some of the the cuts and the academic impacts. So I know that we're cutting the elementary summer school kits. If I can, here is sort of what is the plan for us to support students, elementary students during the summer in place of what those kits provided. Additionally, I know that you mentioned that some of the cuts will be based on building maintenance and and will be making some shift shifting priorities. And so if you could, perhaps, if Mr. Stephanelli can talk a little bit more about how those decisions were made and where where we will see some of those shifts. And most importantly, I'd like to know, you know, when are we going to start to realize some of the savings from the Climate Action Plan in our budget? Specifically, I'd like to know just where are we on track with solar panels specifically in order to realize some cost savings in maintenance? Thank you.
So I will start off with the summer kits, and I will do my best in a few seconds to summarize that. I would certainly encourage you to circle back with one of two things. Dr. White gave a more extensive answer at the last board meeting, so it is recorded. But you can certainly talk with her offline as well. But the summer kits that were that are being provided for this summer that are being considered for for next year was basically providing like a roadmap of resources for parents to have as an option to support our early learners, pre-cumulus day, during the summer months, of certain activities that they would be able to focus on during that timeframe. The kits are mailed out to the schools. So they would be available for pickup, I believe, before the end of the school year. So families would have them over the summer. She went through a pretty extensive presentation at the last board meeting that in addition to the summer kits, there's also a wealth of resources that have been developed online to help support learning over the summer, interactive learning over the summer as well. So yeah, that's kind of my.
I I was working with them on the summer passport work, and I guess I'm wondering about for next year. If we're eliminating that, what will we what will we do in place of of that?
Yeah, that, I mean, that really is part of the work that we will be doing for this year coming. What I mentioned about going through a deep dive of our budget, because there's a lot that we do. But we have to really evaluate the academic return on investment and determine if where we're investing our dollars is having an impact, a favorable impact on and to the extent that we're not having the return on academic achievement, then reinvesting and reprioritizing those dollars towards those items that are moving the needle in a favorable direction. So that's gonna be part of our ongoing exercise as we're preparing for twenty-twenty-six to really have those deep conversations around reprioritizing our spend to ensure that it's aggressively addressing those measures that will have an impact on improved academic performance.
Yes, and I would just encourage to look at that list of software interventions that we're deploying in classrooms to determine, you know, which have been the most effective in moving student performance and and perhaps providing some type of report. This is what we ask and not specifically on user engagement, like in in terms of usage, but more so in terms of student outcomes. And that that was some of what the board asked for at the beginning of this year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then I'll defer over to Dr. Cohen and his team to address your questions about some savings that might be realized from our climate action change, climate action change plan.
Sure, thank you.
As the referred maintenance and repairs.
Thank you, and we'll take it in in that order. So with respect to the energy management piece, because that really is where that falls under the Climate Change Action Plan. Our team is in the process of developing an overall energy management strategy of which one part, it could be considered solar. So we're exploring different power purchase agreement opportunities and options and options for, for example, where to place solar in our in our suite of facilities, whether it be on rooftops or in actual fields that we own as a part of the county. I know that Director Stephanelli can speak to in just a moment that he's working to establish an energy usage baseline, because it's gonna be very important as a part of this process that we can accurately track our current energy usage and therefore be able to determine any any cost savings that would come of it. So I'm gonna defer to Director Stephanelli for that portion.
Yes, as far as that that goes, one of the issues that we've been challenged with is determining our energy usage. We have several different vendors that we purchase power from, Pepco, BG&E, Smeco, just in electricity, and they don't all deliver information to us in the same manner. Some of them, we don't even, they they don't have electronic billing as of yet. So we 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 got a grant, and Jamie Austin, who's our energy management specialist, is working with those companies to get us to the point where we can download and develop a baseline of energy usage so we can see our savings. We've established that. Then we'll be, we will be able to show to show you the the savings we have from that baseline. But until we're able to establish that baseline, that's very difficult to do. And it's and it's more complicated than we thought it would be working in this. It's taking, it takes one person, it's a full-time job just to take our utility bills, decipher them and put the the information into a database in such a way that we can compare apples to apples. And Dr. Coleman is right, we are, you know, cap- solar panels are a capital project. This is not something that we're gonna erect tomorrow or the next day. This just takes time planning. Little issues that we have is we'd like to put them on the roofs. But our roofs are fifteen, twenty years old. You can't put solar panels on an old roof. We have to replace the roof underneath the solar panels prior to that happening. And we're working on a plan that will help us get our roof replaced and provide solar panels for the schools at the same time. But we're working towards developing that baseline so we can we can provide you that information. And I think the second, third part was about the maintenance reductions.
Yes, yes, please. Thank you.
Because the maintenance reductions, we are starting as part of the maintenance program. We're starting that we have somebody that's now inspecting our roofs on an annual basis and inspecting our playgrounds on an annual basis. This is something that we've worked towards. We phased in over the last three years with different other parts of our department. And one thing we looked at was our fire alarms. About four years ago, we bought it a third party to inspect our fire alarms. The first year, we spent over nine million, nine hundred thousand dollars repairing little things that they found. The the money that was reducing the budget was our money to support those inspections. We feel we added another position to our roofing shop, and we feel that we can maintain the roofs and do the work within our current budget. But however, we've had a conversation with the budget officer that if something astronomical comes up that they are prepared to look at additional funding where needed. This was, that funding was to anticipate work that hasn't gotten here yet, so to speak. So now we're looking at doing as much as we can within our budget, and we may have to ask for additional funding later in the year if if something comes up that we didn't anticipate.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to ask for a follow-up on two items. The plan for the baseline study around the energy bills and consolidating those into one company or one, or just just getting an understanding of sort of where that stands. And then also a follow-up on sort of your assessment of where the solar paneling will begin in terms of roof age and other factors. Okay, I also see colleague Pamela Boozer's brother, who has joined us here as a attendee. If you'd like to move over, if she lets me move over to the panel as she can as well. So I'm gonna go now. I believe I saw it was Vice Chair Walker, Chair McInnes-Murray, then Dr. Zaporin Miller, and then Dr. Kenneth Harris. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chair Adam Stafford, before Vice Chair Walker goes, you mind if I go just thirty seconds?
Okay, sure.
Just to piggyback off what you were saying, we're happy to also move that those recommendations of those items through the Climate Change Action Plan Implementation Committee as well. While we don't have that as a as an item for next week's meeting, we will be releasing our our four-year schedule as well as our target areas for each, shortly. I'm somewhat happy to talk through that with you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Doc, Ms. Howell, thank you all for all of your work. What we're adding to is really just helping to try to reduce the seven to eight million that we're really looking at. So I just had a couple of things for your consideration. The first is perhaps taking a look at our almost expired contracts and determining, looking at the funding, looking at the need. Is it something that we still need? Are there other vendors that's available for those contracts? That's one, and it would be good to kind of see that. The second thing, I have a couple of things. The second thing is I recognize that we have unfunded mandates, even some that just were passed this time as well. But I do think, given our deficit that we have, that it it is okay for us to go back to the council and let them know that the six hundred thousand dollars that's in right now for that department, which was unfunded now that we understand what the funds are attached to it. You just can't pay what you can't afford. And I just think that this is the time to really go back and take a look at those positions and really just ask for additional monies. If they have monies that can help fund those roles, what can we do in order to determine right sizing, especially now? The same things you all are doing with realizing some of the costs now and maybe deferring some of the people later. I just think that's an opportunity to look for this six hundred thousand dollars. I know I say it in a different form or fashion every single meeting, but I'm just hoping we can look at that. And I don't think the answer is, hey, we have to do it. We we have to close this seven to eight million dollar gap as well. That's that piece right there. I think the next the next is I'm excited that you all are going again with a fine-tooth comb on all levels of staffing. I, like Dr. Zaporin Miller, do think it would behoove us to go and take a look at, you know, levels, are these the right levels? Are they too senior? Now, I'm not trying to bring everybody down, so people that's looking, I'm not trying to say do more for less. What I'm just saying is now it's time for us to right-size where we are, and we might be able to take a look at some of the positions that want that want to be upcoming at what the right level is for the execution of work that we need. And then the last thing is because we're not revenue generating, then I'm wondering if it makes sense to determine how we can take a look at grants differently. So how can we leverage grants, grant writing, to be able to bring some funds in to help us? Now, I don't know if we have someone who is assigned to that, but I think contractually, we can get a contractor to be able to really focus on that and help us to generate some, bring in some funds to help us with some of our programming. So those are the four that I had ideas for. Thanks.
Yes, and we're certainly leveraging grants that we are getting or gonna have access to for twenty-twenty-five to help provide some of those supports. So as an example, for some of the mental health work that was previously supported by ESSER, we've been able to get additional supports from different grants to allow for that work to continue in twenty-twenty-five. But certainly have that noted as an additional effort to continue to consider other opportunities to do this.
Yes, because, and the last piece, I'm sorry, is because this is a person that's actively searching for grants. And and we might have that in the system already, so I love that you're trying to replace what we have. So we don't lose that, we need that because ESSER funding is leaving. But if there's someone who can really outright go, I know Chair McInnes-Murray, I've sent some that's kind of come from Congressman Ivy, I believe it is the most of them that I see anyway. But thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. Chief Howell, I appreciate your helping to manage our expectations. And Vice Chair Walker, yes, there are people that write grants in the system. There's a group focused on that, and I think the system does a pretty good job with that. Managing our expectations around the integrity officer, I appreciate the fact that you made it its own line item so that the council can see what those requirements are so that they understand the way I look at it is pass-through. They need to provide this system with all of the funds for that particular office. That's how I look at that piece. And then as far as the strategies for the solar, having solar on my house, I know that takes a minute. It does save you money, but you might not see it to twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, but you need to start the work. So I appreciate you managing that piece for us, too. And then finally, I understand the the hiring freeze and all of that that you put on the table. So as I said at the board meeting, I think you've done a good job, pretty much, with looking at a forty-eight million dollar deficit, getting it down to a seven million dollar deficit and having a plan to deal with that. So I would be remiss if I didn't say to you and your team, in this particular instance, I think you guys have done a mammoth job. And I I trust that you will get the board and the system what they need to help the children, because I know that you have to make decisions for a moment in time based on the situation at that moment in time. So I appreciate all of that. So I just wanted to thank you personally for what you've done. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I am gonna have to sign off. And I'm just gonna close with, I'll leave you guys in good hands with Siobhan Smith, the Budget Director, who will take any remaining notes. You know, this is, this is a reconciliation effort just so we can finalize the budget. The work that we're doing to right-size the budget is going to continue. So all the different measures, all the different suggestions, all the different recommendations. As I said before, it requires work. It's not something you can just react to and implement in a short period of time. And I'm sure, I mean, I know this whole conversation around the revenue and what that was gonna look like was something that, you know, we didn't know about a year ago. So we could have developed a very different budget. But it's not something that you can react to in a short period of time with so many other moving parts as well. So the hard work is gonna, has just started, and it's going to continue. So I appreciate all the feedback that I will certainly share with Superintendent House and the rest of the administration. So thank you.
Thank you, and Dr. Zaporin Miller?
Thank you so much, Chair Adam Stafford. This is just a question regarding the online classroom, and you may have answered it or Chief Howell may have answered it. When you say reduce online classroom staffing, the online campus still exists. That's my first question, correct? Okay, so this is not eliminating the online campus, it's just reducing the staffing. But can it, so my next question was, would it be able to still accommodate the requests? Because students have chosen this path or parents have chosen this path for their children because they're thriving in that space. Just want to make sure that we still can continue servicing them with the staffing available.
Yes, so those the students who are currently in on using utilizing the online campus will continue to be serviced. That won't change in any shape or fashion. This is just right sizing the assumption that we used for growth purposes. That's all that particular thing is referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Stephanelli, if you wouldn't mind also sending over as a follow-up that list of the playgrounds, the status that you all have determined of the different playgrounds, as you were mentioning?
Sure, yeah. The contract is for them to inspect every playground in the county once a year for safety. So but we have a list I can I can forward to you of all the playgrounds.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, everyone. If there are no further questions, then we're gonna move forward here. So we're gonna move on now to public comment, and we have five registered speakers. We'll begin with Sine Emmanuel from Progressive Maryland, Climate Policy. Sine Emmanuel from Progressive Maryland, climate policy analyst, now budget allocation, reading clean energy in schools. Um, so if Sine is here, we can bring them over to speak at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair. It's a pleasure to meet you all. My name is Sine Emmanuel, climate policy analyst, Progressive Maryland, and I really appreciate those on the school board who have demonstrated leadership on implementing the Climate Action Plan, and for the sake of the future and of our children, I hope there will be more work done to invest in our schools while also taking care of our environment. And I want to talk today about an opportunity to leverage federal funding coming from the Inflation Reduction Act. So the school board currently spends twenty-five million dollars a year on utilities to cool, heat, and illuminate our schools. But we know that the school board is dealing with a one-point-two-million-dollar annual increase on its utility bills, all while grappling with a seven-million-dollar deficit. The roofs need to be replaced. Why not utilize tax credits that exist now, thanks to the Inflation Reduction Act, to cover the cost of solar panels going on those roofs while we replace them? These tax credits can cover thirty to sixty percent of the solar, of the cost of solar panels, along with providing an ongoing subsidy for any excess energy generated that is sold back to the grid. Communities want the board to invest more in clean energy. That brings with it so many benefits. And only investing forty-six thousand dollars currently allocated in the budget towards solar and renewable energy is not sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sine for your comments. We're moving now to Anton Alukun, Progressive Maryland, PG County Organizer on budget updates.
Anton is moving over right now.
Hi there. Uh, good evening, Board. Thank you, Chair, Sheila Adams Stafford, and the rest of the Board for all your hard work. Um, I'm just, I want to introduce myself. My name's Anton. I'm the Prince George's County Organizer for Progressive Maryland. I've knocked over three thousand doors in South County on the ground, and I've also met with some of the school board members responsible for implementing the Climate Change Action Plan. And I'm here tonight to remark on the budget deficit and urge you all to consider solar panels as a way to help close that deficit. You know, just as a backstory, I, 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 my family and my sisters, we went through the public schools uh, in Pennsylvania when, uh, COVID hit. And so we've seen firsthand, uh, what happens when schools are not given the resources to deal with the catastrophes and situations of our time. So going that, I, I do feel there's an urgency, you know, between the financing options that are available that our climate policy analyst mentioned, Sine. Um, not to mention the price of solar panels will only continue to increase as we move forward. Our goals are, not to mention also our goals as Progressive Maryland, community members in Oxon Hill and South and Prince George's are in alignment with those of the school board laid out in the Climate Change Action Plan, and which is committed to renewable energy. And I also want to remark on the importance of Oxon Hill as a place where this can be the, 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 the grounds for moving forward in the strategic plan. The budget deficit is affecting us now, and the reason Oxon Hill is a great place, uh, to act on the basis for these plans of enacting uh, solar panels as a way to close the budget deficit is, you know, the, some of the plans that Mr. Stefanelle was talking about, right? It has one school already that is utilizing solar panels. It qualifies as a low-income community for extra financing opportunities from these federal funds available right now from the Infrastructure Reduction Act. And it has various roof replacements slated in the Capital Improvement Plan in the next couple of years. And so all of that said, I'd ask that the Budget Committee seriously consider financing the solar panel project in Oxon Hill Schools and showing up for our meeting this Saturday at Oxon Hill Library on the twenty-second from two to three-thirty. And we're getting the community together to show the type of support and initiatives that people want to see in the schools in Oxon Hill, but also all of PG County. So thank you so much for your time, and, uh, thanks again.
Thank you very much. We'll move now to Ms. Gina Parker on solar panels.
Hi, thank you for having me on today. Uh, I'm not going to go over, uh, what my two comrades had said before. Uh, what I will reiterate is that Prince George's County is a school system that has many challenges um, in a, in a community that has many challenges. Where we're asking for the solar panels to go, actually, we have just, as a community, fought to, uh, make sure that another level of destructive, uh, climate issues do not happen. Uh, they were trying to put, uh, battery-operated panels that had a negative impact. Like, we talked about this for years, and they actually stopped. It was Pepco, and they actually put it in, like, Montgomery, okay, you know what I'm talking about? Uh, okay, thank you, Ms. Walker. So we actually talked about that for several years. And so now we're trying to continue on this momentum of moving the community in that area on specifically climate justice and climate action. And to understand that there are about close to two hundred schools in the state of Maryland that have solar panels, and only about four of them are in Prince George's County. And they're not really in South County is very interesting, and it's also very telling of where our priorities are. One of the reasons why we wanted to jump on this immediately and right now is because we really have the opportunity to take care of federal funding, using that to really pay these things off before solar paneling on our schools becomes extremely more expensive. This is something that the community wants, particularly in regards to lowering electricity bills and putting more funding back into our schools. And we'd like to see, um, there to be funds really specifically focused on that. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from Erin, Erin Clark from Progressive Maryland, who'll be speaking on clean energy.
Mrs. Adam Stafford, I don't see Erin Clark as a, uh, attendee, but we do have Shannon Reed.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Good evening. My youngest child will be a senior next school year. While she was in the seventh grade, I reviewed the ELA MCAP and math data for twenty-six schools with high school students. In two thousand and nineteen, there were eight two-star schools, fourteen three-star schools, three four-star schools, and one five-star school. The ceiling for ELA MCAP data for all eight two-star schools never rose above twenty percent between two thousand fifteen and two thousand nineteen. Most schools' inconsistent ELA growth peaked at ten percent. The most recent data shows that several school years later, the county has seventeen two-star schools, six three-star schools, two four-star schools, and still one single five-star school. In every, in two thousand and nineteen, every school's struggle with math was evidenced by Algebra I data that was significantly worse than ELA data. Currently, twenty of the twenty-six percent, twenty of the twenty-six schools have five percent or fewer students with proficiency in math. Data is everyone's business. Students always lose the most when dysfunctional practices, condition systems, and approaches persist in schools. Advocacy begins with knowledge. Parents are the first and best advocates for their children. The transition to synergy is an opportunity to provide parents and students with timely, accurate, and reliable data. Every student information system is equipped to provide individual historical or long-range data for students. If PDCPS uses its resources to enable parents, students, and teachers to see each student's grades in relation to benchmarking formal assessment data across student's school years, PDCPS demonstrates its commitment to transformation and transparency. As it stands, parents and teachers who are relationally closest to students have the least access to historical data that enables them to speak and act on their own behalf. Data is everyone's business. Advocacy begins with knowledge. Establishing functional PTSAs and PTOs in every school also empowers parents and students. I noticed that Roosevelt and Bowie have similar data patterns across many years. I suspect the pattern is in part a reflection of parental involvement. The sketch or overview that the Equity Dashboard provides becomes meaningful when supplemented with specific details that create a distinct picture about particular people, processes, and practices. Parents and the district would also benefit from examining classroom-level data that allows them to be, answer better questions while seeking to know who needs what. Students need quality lessons to develop their potential. Quality-informed teachers deliver quality lessons. We all need to learn that social-emotional learning connected to academic realities makes sense. Hard places produce significant growth if one does the hard work of addressing complex realities instead of resorting to familiar approaches and easy answers. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reed, for your comments. Okay, that is the end of our public comment. So I'm now going to move on to three point two, Blueprint Schools Program Phase Two Exclusive Negotiation Agreement Amendment. I'm going to recognize Mr. Jason Washington to give us updates on the Blueprint Schools Program Phase Two Exclusive Negotiation Agreement Amendment. Thank you, Mr. Washington. You can speak at this time. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, Board Member. Um, yes, we, uh, the Exclusive Negotiation Agreement, uh, was approved by the Board last September. Uh, it allowed for the nine-month negotiating period for us to, uh, finalize the, uh, project agreement and, um, uh, memorandum of understanding. And, uh, that literally laid out the, uh, the terms of our, uh, 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 agreement with, um, progressive education partners. Um, and so what has happened because of the MOU delay, uh, the date in the ENA was for us to commence a deal by June twenty-eighth. Uh, we will not commence a deal because the IAC does not vote until July eleventh. And so therefore, uh, the ENA amendment, uh, before you today extends the, uh, the time for a month through July twenty-fifth for us to finalize the deal. Uh, but the penalty, uh, and it is like a, a change, uh, is an increase to what is known as the breakage fee. So if we don't do a deal, um, the breakage fee, uh, becomes, um, uh, five million dollars instead of four million dollars. Uh, that is not, uh, contemplated, it's not, if we, as long as we pass, uh, as long as it's approved and, and the, uh, contract, uh, moves forward, uh, that is just, um, there. Um, there's nothing we need to pay or anything of that sort. Uh, but it is, uh, necessary for them to not, uh, leave the deal. Uh, because we were, we had agreed to finish by the end of June. Uh, and that is, uh, the cost of the, uh, the state's delay, uh, on potential costs of the school system. Uh, this was, I think, uh, Board Member Rout asked us this question, I think, in May. Um, and that was what I referenced at that time. Um, uh, to discuss that, uh, as of right now, uh, we finalized the MO, MOU. The IAC signed off today, uh, on the MOU, and so that has been, uh, approved. Uh, it will be, um, uh, placed on, I believe, Board Docs tomorrow, uh, for the, uh, twenty-seventh, uh, vote. Uh, we have also, um, as of twenty-two minutes ago, submitted the full package to the IAC for their review for their July eleventh, uh, meeting, uh, which time they will review everything that's been submitted and will make a recommendation uh, to, uh, the Commission, uh, for their July eleventh meeting. Uh, so all of the obligations, everything that, uh, PGCPS, uh, was required to do and the dates that we had, uh, endeavored to meet, we have met. Um, and now, uh, this is moved over to, to the state, uh, for their, uh, sign-off. Uh, any additional questions, anything of that sort. And so, so that's a, a combination of both, but they all flow together. But that's what the ENA amendment is. Um, if it is not approved, um, we, uh, don't have any agreement anymore. So the developer can change their price, they can leave the deal, they can, uh, because they, they were required to hold their pricing until June, uh, twenty-eighth. And so now, uh, we, they have agreed to hold their price until July twenty-fifth. And so, so that's what, um, that, that's what it is. And so I, uh, will see if there are any questions or, or anything, uh, on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, for your presentation. Uh, colleagues, we'll take questions now from the floor. I'm going to see Chair Mickens Murray first.
Uh, yes, thank you so much, um, Vice Chair Harris. Uh, Mr. Jason, I appreciate everything, and I understood everything. My question is this. The two dates that we, that we are deleting, April eleventh and May third, uh, we deleting those because PGCPS didn't do something?
No, yeah, go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
In other words, did we take the action on April fifteenth versus tw- versus April eleventh or June eleventh versus May third? I was just curious about that.
No, so what, what those dates represented were the initial dates when they needed to send us pricing information. They needed to send us, uh, final, uh, proposals. However, since we were waiting on responses from, uh, both Maryland Stadium Authority and IAC, we provided extensions. It didn't ma- tho- those weeks didn't matter because we had the information. But that's what those dates represented. They were milestone dates that, um, everything has still been met. We have everything that we needed, and it was adjusted to either accommodate them or accommodate us, depending on what this, what the issue was.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And for my own curiosity, could, could the Board have approved, um, this agreement, the, um, the delivery date of commercial close deadline? But we have approved it back on May ninth, or were we obligated to work, wait for the IAC?
We were obligated because we were waiting on the IAC's date.
Okay, yeah, that, that I needed, just some clarification around. I don't have a problem with this, and I will vote for it. Thank you.
Sorry, couldn't get off you. Thanks, Chair Mickens Murray. Over to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Thanks, Dr. Harris. No problem. We understand the technology. Um, quick one, Mr. Washington. I heard you, can you just double back on the five million? Um, and I think what I heard you say was that we don't need to pay the five million. It's on, but you, you tell me again what it is.
So, so it is called the breakage fee. So what, the, the, yeah, the risk that the developer took is that they put all of their money in to get to closing at risk. Um, so I think their number, uh, is close to, they spent twenty million dollars so far. Um, if we fail to reach an agreement, we are on the hook to pay them a portion of those fees, the five million dollars. It would be, uh, PGCPS. However, the IAC is well aware that this change is due to their delay. Like, so, so I mean, I don't know if it matters, but they are very clear that we are here because, uh, it was not voted on, on the thirteenth. Um, and so, so, so that's the, you know, that, that, that's the rub of it. Um, we, uh, to, to put this in context, uh, they were asking, uh, when we first started this process, for twenty million dollars at the very beginning. And, uh, we, uh, four million is, is paltry. They all cried, complained, and everything, but they all still bid. So, you know, that, that, that's, um, that's just, uh, where it is. Uh, but like I said, this is, this goes away as soon as there's an approval of the contract because they then can move forward to get their financing.
Perfect, thank you for that. And then the second part of that, you, you, um, answered, I think, towards the beginning part. So we are not at risk of not signing a contract. We're on board, we're doing our part. Um, and we're coming to the table in good faith, and we're, we're ready to sign. Um, well, I'm saying that we've done our part. There, it sounds like they're holding on until the new date. I want to ask you, I want to ask you, what happens if the new date, not because of PGCPS, but what happens if the new date then falls because of a meeting? Where does that put us and our commitment with the five million?
Um, that puts us at risk because at that point, the developer can, can walk. And so, so that's, that's what we have emphasized to, uh, to, to the state is that, you know, we, we are, we, we are at risk. Um, like, so just be clear, the state hasn't put in any money. The county hasn't put in any money. So if this, uh, fails to pass, um, we are on the hook because it's seen as our procurement. And so, so that, that's the, the risk that's here. Um, we believe that we have mitigated all the concerns, uh, that would have been voiced over the past year um, with the, uh, the state and with the county. Um, and so now, like I said, everything has been, uh, sent over. Uh, I think close to twelve thousand pages of stuff. So, uh, we, uh, it, it's a, it's, it's been a, a labor, I can't say of love, but it's been a labor, uh, to get it there. And so now, uh, we, we will see if there are any additional questions or anything as we work through, as they work through their process.
Thank you so much to your team.
Yeah. Now, well, thank, I just, uh, the, the other piece that I want to just also lay out for everybody, just to be clear, is that we sent an interim draft of all of this, May thirteenth. So what we're sending them today are any updates, which I think out of all of those pages is maybe fifty pages. So, so we have, uh, done our part and, and, uh, uh, Board Member Mickens Murray, that was one of those dates that was there in terms of, of sending uh, that information to them in an interim period.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, colleagues, seeing no other questions. Um, Mr. Washington, thank you for your report, um, moving on.
Uh, Dr. Harris, can I, I say one thing I wanted to point out when we were talking about solar panels before? Uh, to just make it clear that all of the phase-one schools, uh, we are finalizing a PPA for the installation of rooftop solar on those six schools. All of the eight new All of the eight new schools that are coming for phase two will have solar panels. And I believe seven of the eight are anticipated to be net zero. So what I not only just have solar panels, but uh but geothermal and all uh other uh types of uh uh sustainability measures uh to reach a net zero. And we have two schools opening this fall, uh New William Wirt uh and New uh Ellen Ochoa. I believe Ellen Ochoa was designed to be at net zero. Um and I and I know William Wirt will have uh solar panels. They both will have solar panels as well. So uh taking that stock, we have sixteen schools within the next two, well, within, by twenty twenty eight uh that will be added to our portfolio of solar um of solar. So I just wanted to make sure that that we said uh that I provided that that context as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I think, uh, thank you so much, Vice Chair Harris, for taking over there. Um, I I think what we as board members need to see is sort of some type of report or tracker that is explaining the cost savings um over time as the buildings are built um to support us in informing decisions. Um I'll go to Vice Chair Harris at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Washington, just want to follow up to the thought around net zero buildings in general. How is the school system going about verifying the the net zero performance of our potential buildings? I assume you can't really know until after a year or two of performance, but what's the, what's the plan for knowing that they actually um are up to par?
They are required by contract uh to to deliver uh net zero schools and to meet our compliance standards. So they will be on contract to continue to uh to report out. Um, the the designer that we have, uh they've delivered two net zero schools in in D C. Um and so it's, they're taking that same approach. Uh there is a uh, they will have a um uh, I want to say database, but that's not it, uh that they will have some type of dashboard that will allow us to to check and see uh for the performance of the schools as we start this process. And uh the expectation is is that until we have verified uh net zero and that we are meeting uh providing no net carbon into the atmosphere uh that they will still be responsible for uh updating systems, maintaining the scan, et cetera. And so so that's how we are, um I don't know uh for Ellen Ochoa uh what the um the vehicle is in place to ensure compliance, but I'm almost certain it is still uh is something similar to that uh with the uh with the architect uh to ensure uh that those schools meet the requirements that are there because that's what we're paying for. We're paying for uh that that performance.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know, my colleague, board member, um Boozer Struth is still here, but I think it would be interesting just to have the conversation around um the utilization of digital twins when it comes specifically to net zero buildings and and things of that nature, but that can provide good either simulated data or really realistic data on how we um can better assess the buildings that we have. But thank you for the response.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you so much. Uh, we're going to move now to a report from uh on operations from Dr. Coleman, then followed by that. Uh, we will have our um internal audit report. Thank you so much.
Uh Chair Adam Stafford, are we going to vote now on the M O U or not? Are you coming back to it later?
Give me one second.
Okay, thanks.
I think we vote on the twenty seventh, Chair Mickens Murray, I think.
I thought you wanted to vote it out of committee. I know we voted on it, but I thought you wanted to vote it out of committee.
Okay, so if I can have a motion to um approve the Blueprint Schools Program to Exclusive Negotiation Agreement Amendment.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, seeing, hearing then the motion passed. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to Dr. Coleman. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Committee Chair Adam Stafford. Uh, we have with us uh Director Kiba Baldwin. Uh, we wanted to provide uh another update regarding our transportation improvement plan. Uh, as we recall from our last meeting, uh we were asked to provide the board uh with a summer call to action or talking points that could be utilized by board members and other members of the public uh to help educate our families in preparation for fall of two thousand twenty four, twenty five. Uh, I don't know if the board staff can pull up the summer call to action document? And if not, I can share my screen.
Yes, I'll give you the ability to share your screen, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, can you all see the two S Y twenty four, twenty five transportation summer call to action?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Director Baldwin. He's going to talk through the first three bullets, and I'll talk through the second three bullets.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, and good evening, uh, board members. As you review this summer um call to actions document, we are really looking for support to maintaining uh positive movement to uh implement the our prioritized recommendations. So I will start by just giving notice to being ready and on the lookout for registering for the new student, excuse me, new synergy parent view portal in July. All parents and guardians must sign up to see the student schedules, the attendance, grades, and more. Second bullet, uh the registration and enrollment for the twenty four, twenty five school year reopens July twenty second. Families are encouraged to register as close to that date as possible for transportation scheduling. Uh and the third bullet is families who do not opt out of transportation for the twenty four, twenty five school year and would like to have the opportunity to do so, we'll be able to do that in the parent view of synergy. So we're just um hoping to get more attention to the out-doubt. Uh, this is a two-fold step, as mentioned by the data management team, to also get contact information, which helps my department in scheduling properly.
Thank you, Director Baldwin. And again, in keeping, uh, we worked with our communications department to develop this flyer uh because we know that our school leaders, board members, uh really wanted a user-friendly, very simple uh set of talking points to take out to the community and share uh so we can bu- build momentum for the fall. Uh, to that end, the second three bullets are focused on Stop Finder. Uh, we know that there's been a lot of energy uh around ensuring that Stop Finder is actually supporting our families uh as they move into using utilizing the buses. Uh, and so we wanted to reiterate through these bullets that there are two key deliverables from the Stop Finder app as we look at enhancing our customer service uh for our families. One is the Stop Finder app should be utilized to see the location of the bus and to receive notifications when the bus is servicing the child. Uh, so that means picking up or dropping off. Uh, and so we really want to make certain that uh families are clear uh when we talk about the functions of the app, because when we talk about apps for locating, some people may think of uh Waze, some people may think of uh uh Uber or Lyft or Google Maps. And so we really want to make certain that families have a clear line of sight on what the app actually is designed to do. So it will allow families who sign up with the Geo Alert to give receive the bus location and also receive a notice when the bus passes through that Geo fence. Uh, they'll receive the alert. That could be for picking up the child at the bus stop as well as dropping them off at school and then vice versa, picking them up from school and then dropping them back off at the stop. So that's number one. Uh, the second deliverable that we are really honing in on with regard to the Stop Finder app is ensuring that families receive updates via the app and or School Messenger uh when the bus is going to be significantly late. Uh significantly late is defined as fifteen minutes or greater. Uh, and so that's where the contact information being updated uh uh in parent view is going to be vitally important. Not only will the this allow the transportation team to provide these regular updates, but it will also allow families to see the student's schedule, be able to receive grade information on their child, see attendance information as well as all the other functions that are going to be in parent view as a part of the synergy student information system. Uh, and so it's vital uh that moving into that third bullet that we have current contact information in synergy parent view so that parents can optimize their experience uh with the Stop Finder app and with just interacting with the uh school system uh 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 in general. Um, so I'm going to stop sharing my screen and open it up for any questions.
Questions? I have a comment. Uh, yes, and before you go, uh, Dr. Um, Board Chairman Mickens Murray, I just want to say thank you so much, Dr. Coleman, for really being responsive to the requests of board members to have this um document to give out to our communities, and we're going to really do our part to partner with you this summer to help get as many families registered and connected. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Chair Mickens Murray and then to Dr. Miller after that. Thank you.
If I could just come, if I could just comment and say thank you uh for that, uh because we really are working hard to uh communicate with our families and we appreciate the board and board members uh for taking up the responsibility of helping to get the word out. So thank you, uh, Board Member Adam Stafford.
Thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. Um, Dr. Coleman and team, thank you. You put work in this. We can see it. You answered this call. Now we will need to execute. So you have a plan. No one can say we don't have a plan, because you do. Thank you for the time. The detail, all of that is evident by this work. So I just wanted to go on record to say, I appreciate it. And even though I won't be here, but I will help you get the word out. I promise you that, and I will defend you because I believe you that you have done a great job. So thank you so much.
Board Chair Mickens Murray, that means so much. Thank you so much for your ongoing support.
We'll go over to Dr. Miller.
Sorry, Dr. Coleman, I I think I echo the sentiments of my colleagues in saying that this is really amazing that you've been able to bring us these updates and being very responsive to where we are and uh ditto to making sure we get the word out. I have two questions. One is actually thinking ahead. Um, and one is now, you know, I I I really do thank you for clarifying at the last board meeting that even if parents don't sign up for sin- to through that new system, they will get transportation. So then the the follow-up question to that would be Stop Finder. If they are, do they need to sign up separately for Stop Finder? Because I can see how with this app, if it's working, that will alleviate parents being worried about where their kids are when they know what the, where the bus is. So that's part A. Part, well, and you can answer it any order. The second part of it is thinking now and thinking ahead in terms of levels of escalation. There may be some parents or community members who would like to um who would like to sign up, but just need some help. So during the summer, will there be some uh teams available to walk them through this so that they can sign up? And then when we actually executed the beginning of the year, will there be teams available who can do some of the easy questions to answer? And then the a- another t- you know, being able to escalate up where there's some things that the that need a supervisory level to be able to answer. So I said a lot. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. And and you can clarify for me if I'm I'm a little shaky on the second response. I just want to make sure I answer the question. Uh, but at the board meeting meeting, as you uh mentioned, uh Board Member Miller, uh Director Baldwin did a good job of laying out for the app itself that we need parents to partner with us in order to get the full functionality out of the app. And so by that, I mean, uh, we had sixty thousand invites that were sent out to parents who were on buses, their children were on buses, they're ready to go, we have their information. We just needed them to, so we send them an invitation to accept the app, right? Download it and activate it. Sixty thousand invitations went out. Only twenty four thousand of those families actually downloaded the app based on the invitation and then activated it. So we already lost over half of the parents just from that first step. And so when we talk about getting the word out, that is what makes it so important. You can, we need that full partnership uh with our families to optimize the use of the app. Now, to go even further, Director Baldwin shared that out of that twenty four thousand who downloaded and activated the app, only five thousand actually created a Geo Alert. And the Geo Alert, because I've been following a yo- a young person in fourth grade uh for, since April um with my Stop Finder app and seeing the Geo Alerts, I set up all of it so I could track and see, does the app work? And all we need them to do, the families, is to set up the Geo Alerts wherever they would like to see them. I did one around the home stop, and I did one around the school. And once you do that, you'll receive a push notification every time the bus passes through that Geo fence. And that's where you're getting the, every morning I was getting an alert for this fourth grade young person out of uh Heather Hills that their bus picked them up and the bus dropped them off, and then the bus dropped them uh picked them up in the afternoon and then dropped them off back at the home in the in the afternoon. And I received those notifications, multiple notifications daily. And then if you tap on the notification, the push notification that came, you can actually see the bus on the map, tracking through the route on the way to school. And so that's the type of functionality that I believe people want. But in order to get it, they have to download the app, activate the app, set up the Geo Alert, and they'll be good to go. If that, once they do that, they don't have to touch it again. And so we really, that's why we've been sending out the video uh to families about how to set that up. Uh, to your second question, uh, it's a partnership, right? So we will be working with each of our schools, just like we've been doing so uh this spring around signing up or getting good contact information in school max. We're going to rely on our to our school partners because our parents are used to interacting with their school teams. We want to continue to empower the schools who are closest to our families to educate them on how to maximize uh the use of the app. Uh, and so that's one of those partnership areas that we're going to continue to focus on uh with the school teams to ensure that we can uh get our parents up to speed.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coleman. Before I go to Vice Chair Walker, I just had an idea. For all of us board members that have students that are in P G C P S, could we go, could we do a TikTok live with you this summer or maybe an Instagram live and show us actually go through the steps of downloading the app? And just in that way, we can get it out to all of our groups and H O As. They can sort of skip, go through it in real time. And then I'll pass it to Vice Chair Walker and and our our S M A B, Rain Rivera-Fords.
Sure. And and before you do, Board Member, uh, I know that the communications team, they they teased at the last meeting that they're coming up with a set of vignettes kind of in the in the vein of what you just described uh showing actually in bite-sized chunks, sixty seconds, ninety seconds uh of how, exactly what you described, how to download the app, what the app functionality looks like. And so we certainly are open to uh reaching and connecting with our families through any social media platform, uh uh having live sessions, whatever we need to do. Because once they're set up, it's done. It's set it and forget it, and you'll have the functionality that you're looking for.
Thank you so much. Chair Adam Stafford, could we, could I just ask as a, oh, and this is probably not for Dr. Coleman. This is really communications to, uh, the clarity in which you explain it to ensure the parents understand this, there's two things. You want um accurate information and synergy. That's one thing, right? And you also want them to download this app, activate and um set up the Geo settings in the app. So that's two things. So in communicating to be sure that parents understand that these are two different things that they need to do in order to ensure, they're going to get transportation, but to ensure that you are actually sending the bus where the bus needs to be and then for them to be able to keep up. So this may be a follow-up for communications to ensure clarity in the messaging of the two things that need to happen over the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Vashir. Thank you so much. Yes, I am so glad that um board member or Chair Adam Stafford. Uh, talked about how you can leverage the board because that's what I was thinking in my mind. Thank you so much for that. The live Instagrams are so important because we do have followings on our social media and we are able to do it also. Um, I like how you did the three. That's so key, so easy in a thumbnail for us to just be able to push out and talk through. Um, one of the things I was gonna also say is if, if we could be part of the test, following somebody from Heather Hills or whatever. Then how great is that, that then I go to my community and say, guess what? This is what I was able to do today. I want you all to see that. It's just value in the board member being able to share that with their community. So if you put us and the PCAC members on there, then that's already, and it's smob on there. That's already ways that you're coming from all angles. You're coming from the parent view. Uh, that's the PCAC in a community. You're coming from the board member view, which has some credibility inside of their districts. And then you're also coming from the student perspective of why it's important that we know exactly where it is that they are. So that's an opportunity as well. Um, I love the summer work. Uh, but also we could, we could be doing this thing ongoing. One of the things I wanted to ask you specifically around parent view or synergy. So for instance, I moved within the last school year. So I had to physically go to the school in order to update my um address. I couldn't do it online for um school max. So I'm wondering if there are parents that's in that situation, would you tell them to pause? And wait until synergy comes on where I'm assuming that they have the option to do that? Or would you say no, follow the process and still go to the school? I think that's important and we can help communicate that too. Thanks.
Sure. So it, it's going to be, I would say, register uh as soon as we can get families. Because I'm not sure if you're talking about a new registration or just a, an address change.
Well, mine ended up having to be a whole new registration. I don't know why. But it was, I'm just talking about just an address change. So I had to take the deed and all of the things, but it was an address change and it, I needed to fill out all the paperwork.
I understand. I would encourage families to go as soon as possible to the school and register. Uh, we are in the midst of the blackout period until July.
July.
System comes back up, but that doesn't mean that the school can't collect the information, verify everything. And then it's just a matter of it being entered uh once the system comes back up and is live. Uh, so I would encourage families to register early, make the adjustments early. Certainly, they're going to have to touch parent view once it reopens. Uh, we are going to be encouraging all families to activate, everyone's going to have to activate parent view. Every, so whether I'm a current registrant, a new registrant, everyone has to go in and touch parent view. And that will give them the ability to opt out if they'd like to opt out if they haven't already. Or to see their child's schedule or to see grade information, you know, communicating with the, with the teachers. Uh, seeing attendance, receiving the uh school messenger uh uh messages. Like all of those functions will be built into parent view, but we need that activation in order for it to happen. It's not automatic.
No problem. And then two small um bites. One is tonight, we heard a comment on um functionality of um the, the new system synergy. And if it would be possible, you don't have to answer now, but if you can look into it, I actually thought it was a really good idea. Um, to be able to see our testing information, like over time with the MCAT testing was for your specific child. So if we have the ability to do that, that would be phenomenal. Um, that's one.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to defer that to uh IT. Uh, yeah. And monitoring and accountability, but certainly we can take that back. Um, and just going back to your initial uh point around the, the focus group testing. Uh, the app, uh, that is definitely in the plan. Uh, that was in the plan that we talked about with our board updates. And so I actually received an email today uh from IT. Uh, looking for that first group of, or that next group of parents uh that we want to utilize to um uh be that practice group with the app. And we are going to recommend PCAC uh to do that. And we also are going to be looking for some board members. Uh, so I think OBFA would be, makes a lot of sense. Uh, uh, we're starting with our OBFA members if that's all right. Uh, we'll recommend that as far as a, a group that can support that work.
Thank you. And then the last small piece was based on something that you said is um. Would you be able to send a communication to the schools just to let them know, hey FYI? In the event a parent does come to register, we know the systems are down, but please collect that information. I don't know that um, that they know that piece right there. So that just will be um good. That's it. Just to close the communication loop on that one. I know it's a blackout period, but I don't know if they're collecting information in the meantime.
They, absolutely. Uh, I will, I will confirm uh with monitoring and accountability because they work with our registrars. But as a former principal for fourteen years in our district, we don't close. We take registration uh when we, when parents are available. Uh, and from that point, we then will enter it into the system. But we're not gonna allow a computer not being available to not have us interface with our families.
Love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's go over to uh our smob.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harris. I just wanted to echo what the other board member said. They kind of took away everything I was saying. But um just to specifically put it towards the smob now. Working with the student member of the board, the next one, Jamal Jonggo, to get that out there. I definitely um can see the students getting more involved, especially high school students. Because I see us downloading the app ourselves really and looking through it more than our parents. So helping them through navigating it and also like the smob gives reports at the regional SGA meetings. So just giving a report information for the smob to go through, or you could go to those meetings yourself or send someone to report to the SGAs. That way they're taking that information back to students as well. I think that will be very helpful with just spreading the information out and ensuring that all students have um access to it. So thank you for all your hard work as well. It is greatly appreciated on behalf of the students of PGCPs.
Thank you for that, board member Rivera Forbes.
All right, colleagues. Seeing no further questions, thank you for your um updates, Dr. Coleman. And thank you for your questions, uh, both committee members and our visiting members. I really appreciate everyone being here tonight. And for the robust discussion, I'm going to now move on to item three point three. Third quarter internal audit report. For yours, Ms. Walterson.
Correct. Thank you, Vice Chair Harris. Um, okay, we have a presentation shared. Good evening, everyone. I am here on behalf of Mrs. Will Winston still to present the um third quarter report. Of internal audits activities. Can I have the next slide, please? Okay, this report is presented in part um fulfilling the requirement. For our reporting requirement as outlined in our charter. Next. Okay, for the third quarter of this um fiscal year, internal audit has conducted um a total fifteen audits. And there was our issued audit reports. Uh, we've also, this included six operationals, six student activity funds and three investigations. We've also um received and reviewed a total of one hundred forty-five hotlines. And um during this process, we have reviewed one point one million dollars. In school activity funds. Next. Okay, uh, here I'm going to just, I guess, briefly go over some of our operational audits. And the first one was the school emergency procedures operations follow-up audit. And this audit um was a follow-up to a similar audit that was conducted in two thousand and twenty-two. And um we have identified in that previous audit. Eight um, we ate recommendations. And during this audit, we were able to determine that four of those recommendations were fully implemented. Two were partially implemented and two were not implemented. We've also identified two additional findings, um, three, sorry, and. But all of them were um concurred with by the auditee. And um those were implemented or the implementation is ongoing. Next. The other audit, operational audit was assure ID. Assure ID is an audit that um. Birthed out of an audit that was um per previously performed um. Of ID management. And in this process, we identified that. Assure ID was an application that was, was a standalone up um. Application that was used by transportation services during the ID management audit. We recommended that this process be included in the centralized process for issuing ID. Um, ID badges. And based on the follow-up audit that we did reviewing assure ID, the assure ID application. We were able to determine that this um recommendation was fully implemented. Um, there was however, two observations that we wanted to bring to your attention. And one such is a, is excessive delay in ID badge issuance to newly hired boss lot employees. Um, management partially concurred with that observation. And the second is the assure ID application has not been properly disposed of. And management has concurred and has determined that an action would have been taken to address that. Next. Okay, the other um operations audit was a red circle. Um, fro- or frozen, depending on the union um review that was conducted. And this audit was also a follow-up. I know that we get questions often. Have you followed up to ensure that recommendations have been implemented? And we have um followed up and noted that implementation has occurred in this case. Um, the corrective action was taken. Um, but in some cases. Four of the four recommendations, two were fully implemented, one was partially implemented and the other was undetermined. And we noted an additional um finding, and this is based on entering personnel action. We noted that the personnel actions were not processed timely. Management has said in, did not concur with this finding. Um, so um, I guess, maybe well, in our recommendation, what we recommend, recommended. Or how we uh recommended that management should have. Um, addressed the issue, management had a different way. So the non-concurrence was not that it did not occur. It's just the approach in getting it done. It differed from what internal audit recommended. Next. School facility use and um fees analysis. So this was an operational audit that was more of a continuous audit in nature. Where we reviewed the facility use fees and um to determine how these um fees were. Well, assessed and was Prince George's County Public School getting the appropriate value? For services of the um bill, bill, use of the buildings. And we noted, we a few observations here, segregation of duties. And I must say, management mostly concurred with this rec, the recommendations or the observations here in this audit. This review. We noticed the first one, there was um inadequate segregation of duties. Where most of the functions for performing the um administration of facility use. Was conducted by a single per staff member and um. The, there's a corrective action that was, that's scheduled to go in effect regarding that as of July one. And they were unscheduled facility use. Management did agree with us on that. Um, unpaid rental fees, we were able to identify those um based on the data that we, we got. Um, inconsistent application of rental fees was another area. And then the, I guess, the design of the system that houses information was not user friendly. So that was another observation that we made, management agreed. And I think that um from what I recall, there is a, a process in place to um transition. Not transition, to update the platform that's used to um get the information. Next. There was another IT audit, Tridium Niagara application. And this is an audit of the IT um security and access controls that was conducted. Um, this audit revealed a single finding. And the finding was that standard operating procedures for Tridum Niagara access authorization. Were not effective. Um, so it, there was, the access was not properly authorized in that sense. So management concurred with that finding and um an action date was provided to us, which has passed. So by now, I guess, when we do the follow-up, we'll see, did they implement timely? Next. Okay, and here we are, school activity funds follow-up audit. So this was a continuous audit that was conducted to determine whether schools implemented. The recommendations for school activity fund audits. So the audits that were um, the audit, the school, number of schools audited in this process was sixty-four SAF. Um, for the period. And we looked at all the um recommendations that were issued from that period. And we selected all the schools that had four or more recommendations. Uh, findings, and then we review the recommendations associated with those findings to see whether management implemented. Um, management has implemented in some cases and others. Management has not implemented um the recommendations that were made by accounting. We have since um submitted, well, we, we sent that um review. Sometimes we did not, in some cases, we did not get responses. So the instructional direct, directors were requested to provide oversight in attaining principals corrective actions for this period. So we have received a significant amount. We have not received all, but we resent it. It's in a, the share at Google, um, Google form, um, Google sheet, sorry. And we're, we've sent it there, we send reminders and. Providing updates to instructional directors and associate superintendents. And hopefully we can have the appropriate response on this. And this is an audit that we plan to continue to do annual, at least annually. So that we can engage principals, engage instructional directors and their supervisors. To ensure that they're listening, they're observing what is going on with the recommendations that we're making. And they are taking the appropriate actions to ensure that um the schools are, the principals and bookkeepers. Are addressing the recommendations and improvements are made. Next. Investigations, the three investigations that we've um had or we conducted during the period. One was for the. One was for the um Louis Wilson Senior Facility Building. Um employee pay improper payroll, the other was for uh Charles Flowers High School. Um twenty twenty-three funds and the third was Excel Academy grading practices, so. We've conducted these um investigations based on the complaints that we've received and. And none of these were substantiated. Next. Okay, for the student activity funds that we conducted this period. We have um conduct the the six schools that we've reviewed. Uh resulted in a total of twenty-three audit findings um of and. Uh approximately thirty-one, I think thirty-one recommendations. Of the recommendations that were provided to management or to. Administ- school administrators, the um, they have concurred with. All but three, three and the three that they did not fully concur with were partially concurred with. So um we've identified their regular findings of um delinquent deposits. Findings of um mismanagement of funds received. Mismanagement of disbursements, the normal findings that we find day to day, but um. Management has responded positively and when we do the follow-up audit, we'll see whether they've come, they've implemented. Um the recommendations that they've concurred with. Next, okay, um, this is just a summary of our hotlines. The one hundred and forty-five hotlines that we've received and reviewed for the period and here we see our top. I think from top four um was parent and community relations, school and office management. Bullying and harassment and employee relations with employee relations being. The highest in terms of frequency. Next. Okay, the audits planned for our fourth quarter, um, we have, these are. Operational audits, we have already conducted the exit conference for our EJ Ward. IT audit, um, we've conducted exit conference for. Tool allotment, the skyline technology expenditure review is a continuous audit, it does not require. An exit conference um and the human resource audit. Is still wrapping up in the la- latent part of the field work phase. Um, we have since issued the tool allotment audit. And we anticipate that the skyline technologies expenditure review will be issued tomorrow. And the EJ Ward report is to be issued soon also, so um. That's all the audits, I think that the human resource certification process audit. Uh will not be issued until the next um fiscal year, so that one crosses over. And and this brings me to the end of the presentation for today. Um, and I think I I must say thank you for your attention and um. I am listening to hear whether you have any questions.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Walter Sample. I have a couple of quick questions if you could.
Uh huh, yes ma'am.
Slide number nine, if you could share your screen again. So you know, I've I've had a constant sort of question regarding these um student activity funds and. Some of the challenges around them. Is there a way that you all could quantify sort of how much we're losing by the. The mismanagement of these school activity funds, just to put a dollar amount here. And especially with these, these actions not being implemented, I mean, it seems like there's over. Eighty actions that have not been implemented, you know, based on what I'm looking at here. So that's my first question.
So to quantify, we may not be able to assign um a specific dollar amount. And the reason is that these, there there's a potential for loss. But um when we perform the audit, we cannot quantify what that loss is, for example. Let's say it's mismanagement of funds received and one of the issues there is that. Funds received by schools are not deposited timely. Or they're held by the teacher who collected the funds and they're not remitted to the bookkeeper so that they can get deposited on time. There is a risk there that if the funds are left with the teacher, funds can get stolen. Funds um can, funds can get lost. Um, you know, so there's a potential for loss.
That's the number I'd like to know, you know, I'd like to be able to say because of this mismanagement. We could have had a potential loss of, you know, however many millions of dollars.
Okay.
I think that is a number that we need to see, that we can pass some policies. That would stop that, I mean, we are only out seventy-seven million dollars now at this point and I'm. Looking for every penny basically and I feel like these, this is a continual challenge. For the system and this is an area that we as board members should pay closer attention to because this really is at the school level. Um where we're seeing these challenges and there perhaps needs to be a policy that can support in. You know, dealing with some of these challenges, so some type of document that says like what are the potential losses, I mean, you could just choose one of the categories. Now, but you know, maybe in the future, we could look at several categories, but just in that example. Mismanagement of funds receives, received, we could have had a potential loss of how many million or how, how ma- how much money. And then.
So before you, before you go on um.
Yes.
Chair, um, what we can do, we can, we can certainly try to capture this information. Um, and present it to you in terms of dollar and cents um. We can capture, all of it cannot be quantified, but the ones that can be quantified, we can probably work on that and. Try to maybe have an add a slide to this pre- presentation so that. It provides you with that information, so I'm going to take that one back and we can work to add a slide where we. You know, capture that information for your benefit.
Thank you, and then that will support us in our policymaking. Um, another question I have, if you could go up to the school facility slide, I believe it was slide uh seven maybe. You know, I'd like to know um sort of where, where are we in terms of. Just sort of understanding where we are situated. In the um, the amount that we charge to use our facilities, so locally. You know, are our fees less or more? Um, are our fees less or more than the, the um parks and rec? You know, what, maybe if you could help us to understand because perhaps. There may be some opportunities there to either raise fees to. Cover some of the costs and the wear and tear on our schools or to cover some of our deficits or to. You know, charge different fees or to lower the fees so that we're more competitive and we get more people that want to use our facility. Um, but essentially, I just want to understand sort of. You know, what are we charging, what is this on par with what's happening regionally and where is there room for us to improve here? On school facility use. Cause I know for, for certain, like in my district, there are different, you know, community organizations that use schools. But you know, the wear and tear on our schools week after week, um, that does add up, that does have a financial. You know, burden that we is passed on to us, so maybe we need to, when was the last time the fees were adjusted, do you know? Did make perhaps um Dr. Coleman or um Mr. Stefanelle, if someone from facilities can speak to that, when was the last time our fees were? You know, observed or adjusted or anything.
Okay, um, I I guess I'll defer um the response to. Mister Stefano, um, or his team, um, but the purpose of this audit was to see, okay. Are the fees that um we're receiving, are those accurately calculated, are they. Consistently determined and you know, that's what we were, that was the objective here. It did not, you know, encompass all that um information regarding comparing. The fee for um reasonableness compared to another um entity. So um, but that's something we can definitely consider for a future audit. Anyway, I'll defer the rest of the response to Mister Stefano and Doctor Coleman.
So the facility use rate fees are actually reviewed by the board. Um, I can't say the, the, the timeline around how often, but I want to say annually. Uh, but I would, I would have to double check that, I'm not certain of that. Board chair, you're shaking your head no, so please go ahead and clarify that.
Yes, uh, I don't, I, well, I know it hasn't come before the board since I've been chair and I've been here a year and a half, so. Uh, so that's not an accurate statement, but what I was gonna suggest is that now that the board has an audit committee. That is chaired by Brandon Jackson, maybe those kinds of things can become. Can be reviewed annually as they discover what they should be and maybe um, Ms. Walter Simper. Can um, Simper, yeah, can meet with uh Mister Jackson and they have a meet and greet. And discuss some of this as they're moving forward, how the board's audit committee would interact with our audit team.
So thank you for that clarification, I apologize for misspeaking.
Thank you.
Um, the, the, one thing that I would uh say also though is, I'm glad that we would have a committee to look into it because it is a complex. Question, um, we have community members who rely on the utilization of our, our facilities uh. And they have limited funds available uh by which to. Uh, support whatever program they bring, uh, but at the same time, there is, you know, when you use something, it requires more maintenance. It requires more upkeep and so there's that push-pull of being a strong community partner. Uh, but at the same time, ensuring that uh the facilities are ready for their core. Um, uh, uh, purpose, which is availability for instruction, so uh, there's a lot of uh. Discussion that needs to be had on both sides.
Yes, and we, and you know, we don't want to exclude community members from using this, um, I think we just need to. We need to do a, a more, we just need to, as a board, take a look at sort of the usage, the impact and the cost. That's all I'm saying, yeah. Thank you so much, um, any of my other colleagues have any a- a- action items here? Okay, go ahead, Dr. Miller.
Good, thank you, uh, Chairman Stafford, this is a quick question, there was a slide about the IDs um. The bus drivers and the IDs. The question um I guess would be. The findings um saw and correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a delay in getting the bus driver's IDs. So what is the impact on them starting work if they don't have their ID?
We need our staff to have IDs in order to move forward with their work. So what we are trying to do or working to do in transportation is make certain that we're working with our HR partners. Uh, to streamline that part of the process, so it doesn't become uh, uh, an impediment. Uh, to drivers or bus attendants being able to move forward with their onboarding process.
Is, is there anything, and you don't have to answer it now, Dr. Coleman, is there anything we can do as a board, whether it's provide more equipment or. To ensure that the bus drivers teams, because I know that they are at different places and I don't want to. Belabor getting into the process, but if you can think of this, anything we can do as a board. To assist with that, because we know that you have been working, you and your team has been working feverishly to ensure. That we have on-time bus arrival, on-time, you know, and it would entail also the bus drivers starting on time as well.
Yeah, absolutely, um, I, I would defer that to our chief of human resources, Dr. Baldwin. Uh, but certainly what I can say is uh, transportation and human resources. Uh, have engaged in a series of meetings to look at just what you just described. Uh, we have to be looking at this from really two pillars uh to get to where we need to go. One is improving operational efficiency and effectiveness. And two is staffing and hiring and retaining the staff that we have, uh, so we need both pillars. In order to get to the types of transportation improvements that we're looking towards, uh, and that's the goal, so. I would defer exactly how the board could, could um support that work to her, Dr. Baldwin. Uh, but I do know that we are coordinating uh, uh, now around um. Uh, how to ensure we have that pipeline of staff.
Thank you. And you said Dr. Baldwin, as in Dr. Baldwin H R, correct?
That is correct, Dr. Chris Baldwin, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your attention to our presentation.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation, um. I wanted to just take a quick moment before we close out for today and just shout out to Rain Rivera Forbes. Um, our student member of the board who has been an integral member of the Obafa team. Um, and I personally have just been so impressed with how you always keep us centered on students. And how you have just been asking all the right questions at the right time. So Rain, you will be sorely missed, but I hope that you'll take your learnings from this experience and apply them. Uh, up in Towson, right? Tiger, hi Tow- Towson Tigers. Okay, and I'm gonna um see if any other board members would like to say a few words to Rain.
Yes, Rain, you know I love you, right? And, and since, and since, and since Towson is an, my grandson is an alum, an alum of Towson. I'm gonna keep an eye on you because he knows people, so we're gonna, we're gonna spy on you, okay, just know that.
Go ahead, Board Member. Then Vice Chair, uh, Dr. Harris.
She's not me, I mean, she's needs to unmute route, she's trying, but she.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hey Rain, I just wanted to say it was a pleasure serving with you on the board, um, you are so smart. And um, you know, you really have paved the way for students to have a voice here on this board. And I'm so thankful to have served along with you and looking forward to you um. Doing big things in your future in politics.
Okay, uh, Dr. Harris.
I'm just gonna echo our, our colleagues here, um, Rain, it's been a pleasure to work with you, very, very proud of you for everything you accomplished this year. Um, and much success at Towson, you know, it's not too far, so come visit us at the board sometime and. And I hope you have a great first year and uh collegiate success.
Um, any of the administration uh want to say, if you'd like to, you can feel free to as well.
Rain, I just want to say good luck to you, you are an incredibly impressive young lady. Um, and I know for a fact that you're gonna do wonderful, wonderful work in the future, so. Uh, will you just make us all PG CPS proud and I just am looking forward to your exciting future.
Great, and Dr. Miller.
And I would say ditto, Rain, you are incredible, you are a thought partner. And you brought a lot of not just. And you brought a lot of not just energy, but a lot of invaluable um input to this board. Please continue to do what you're doing. We know you're gonna do great things. And if there's anything that I can do to support you, I am here.
All right, wonderful. Okay, well, thank you so much. Oh, Rain, sorry.
So sorry, I just wanted to respond if that was okay, but um thank you, everyone. It has truly been an honor. Serving as the student member of the board and obviously I have my very long-winded speech uh coming up next week, but. Not too long-winded. I'm sharing is very Mister Fitzpatrick, I promise it's not gonna be too long with it. But I have really greatly appreciated this experience and especially to be the first student member of the board to serve on this committee and to the first smop to vote on the budget. Is truly been an honor to be able to lead by example and I'm so excited for the legacy that's going to just continue from this position. From the smops that have been here before me and the ones that will come after me. And I thank you all for being able to give me the platform and encouraging me in everything I have done. I have truly enjoyed working with you and I'm going to miss you all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rain. Uh the follow up items from our May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four committee meeting will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Again, thank you everyone for a great meeting and a great year. Again, we wish you so much uh just blessing and good luck. Rain and your, your future endeavors and we're so thankful and happy for uh this team pressing forward. Uh with some of the great challenges we faced with the budget um and additionally uh the new uh sort of. Era we're ushering in of the transportation change. And thank you to all of the members of the administration for your diligence. With all of our questions, helping us to chart this path forward. And also thank you to our board staff. For all of your work and making sure that this committee runs smoothly and passing a record number of amendments this year. Um you all did a wonderful job of helping keep us in line. Thank you to uh Vice Chair Dr. Harris. Uh for helping us run smoothly. Um to all of the members of the committee, um Board Member Joss and Ralph, uh Board Member Mickens Murray, thank you all so much. Um for being here and being present at each meeting. Uh may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. And also thank you to Chair Adam Stafford for her leadership for this year.
Great, great job, great job.
Thank you so much. Okay, it's been moved and seconded um to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. The time is now seven sixteen P M and we are adjourned. Have a great evening. Thank you, everybody.
Birthday, Jocelyn.
Happy birthday. Ralph. Happy birthday. Thank you. I couldn't believe I saw her face during us on her birthday.